Commissioner and Chair of the Board of Commissioners, and I'll toss it over to Pat.
Pat Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Good morning. Zan Ojuro, Commissioner.
Good morning. Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Eric Michael, Land Recorder.
Oh, hi. Brent Griffiths, Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office.
Stephanie Stafford, Oregon State Fire Marshal.
Trask Hodgson, Community Wildfire Forester, Oregon Department of Forestry.
Senator Leo Williamson, Protection Unit Forester, Oregon Department of Forestry, Fallon.
Aaron Aris, Fire Chief for Daredevil Fire Department, First Alternative for the Fire Defense Board.
All right, it looks like we might have a couple people online, two if they would like to introduce themselves.
Good morning. Kate Porsha, Department of Alton County Economic Development Office.
Larry Bogan, Administrator Specialist.
Tom Miller, Fallon Fire Chief, and also Ben County Fire Defense Board Chief.
Michael Curran, I'm the District Forester for ODF's West Oregon District.
All right, welcome everybody joining us this morning. We will move on to announcements. Are there any announcements? Hearing none. We will review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
All right, I will consider that approved, and we will move into the work session. First item up, third quarter fiscal year 2021-22 Economic Development Update with Kate Porsha, the Economic Development Director. Welcome, Kate.
Good morning, everybody. For your first meeting, I would have, I would have made the effort to come, come show up. Proof positive of how used we all are to Zoom meetings, but next time. So, good morning, everybody. Just wanted to come before you and give a brief update with where we're at for our, believe it or not, first through third quarter already, results of, of the work of our office. Real quick, just a handful of items to work through with you guys. We've continued to do our outreach to businesses. Some with a, you know, some focus on COVID response, but that's really waning now. I think the challenge most businesses are having at this point is around hiring, and I know you guys are feeling it in your own organization, as are we, and it just, it's prevalent throughout all of our different areas, whether it's manufacturing or restaurants, you know, you continue to see a handful of, at least some of my favorite places that are closed on Mondays. A lot of that is just due to staffing at this point in time. We have reached out, though, so far this year to 161 businesses to communicate with them, assist them in different ways. We've got a couple, actually a handful of larger projects sort of brewing that we've been working on. So, I feel like, sort of my read on this is that we've had a lot of businesses that have been thinking, people's creative juices have been flowing through the pandemic, and, and now that we're approaching, hopefully, the end of that, I think folks are ready to get going on exciting things like expansions or moving to the area or starting that business that they've always been thinking of. So, I think things are, are feeling pretty darn good again, except for the hiring, and then, of course, inflation costs that are hitting businesses as well, and the challenges that go with that. Thinking about different accomplishments in, in the areas that we're working on, one of the items, as you all know, is we continue to have a focus on supporting our downtown. The DCA, we have completed the transfer of the Economic Improvement District, which is only going to run through the end of the year. That's the funding mechanism the DCA was using in part. We're transferring that over to the Chamber, and I think, as you all know, the Chamber of Commerce, Corvallis Chamber of Commerce, is going to be setting up a committee focused on downtown and really looking at ways to support. We're gonna, we're gonna continue to be a part of that conversation, making sure that downtown has the support it needs. Interesting, though, I did want to make you aware, our team, along with Public Works, we are exploring a block of electric vehicle charging stations in downtown. We're pretty excited about this because we think it meets, you know, the sustainability goals of our organization, but it also has this tourism and strengthening of downtown to have folks that are traveling through park their cars, and then while it's charging, go get some food, you know, go check out some local shops. So, we're pretty excited about that and, and taking a look at locations that those can go, and, and our team did an RFP and are reviewing those, so that's, that's forthcoming. The BROW program, the Business Right Away, this is the program that allows restaurants out to expand out onto the street. We have still a pilot program that's going to be running through this summer, and we're continuing to consider a long-term program. The city is in the midst of a parking study, so we're wanting to finish that out, I think I had shared with you guys before, and really understand where we're at in terms of parking utilization prior to then committing to or having that policy discussion about a permanent use for the restaurant. So, that's sort of forthcoming once the parking study and information is done. On the Food Hub, a quick update, we're having the first meeting of our stakeholder group that'll be working on the Food Hub. As you may recall, this is the $550,000 of ARPA funding that we received from Senator Gelsner Blodin's office. We're gonna have a work group that's gonna get together and start to talk about next steps for this project and getting that underway. We are still awaiting the final release of funds from DAS, but that'll be coming shortly, but so we're gonna get these, the meetings going. And I wanted to let you all know, too, I was able to apply for some additional funds through Senator Merkley's office through the appropriations process. So, maybe a long shot, we won't know till late fall or, or winter, depending on how that process goes, but we did put in for another $950,000. So, we'll see, we'll just see what happens, and again, trying to create some momentum with our Food Hub. Couple other updates, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Our Urban Renewal District down in South Town, we're continuing to work on development of affordable housing policy as well as outreach to businesses down there, down in that area, to understand what their needs are, so we can begin to formulate looking at the potential for a business support program. We're pretty excited about that. And the annexation of our Airport Industrial Park, Jerry's continuing to work on that and look through the different code issues and have conversations. So, that's, that one's a pretty heavy lift. It's multifaceted, but we're, we're continuing to look at that annexation and stepping through the process. Not in our work plan, but while we're talking about, gosh, tools in our toolbox, we, Jerry, I say we, really, I mean Jerry, is working with Chris in, Chris Workman in Fallon, as their city council considers the potential of an enterprise zone to assist businesses in Fallon. You all may know, we do have an enterprise zone in Benton County, but those parcels are located currently either in Corvallis or down at the Airport Industrial Park. Fallon does not have an enterprise zone. And for folks that are tuning in or watching and are like, what is an enterprise zone? It is a tax abatement, basically, on property tax for businesses that either construct new buildings or buy new taxed large pieces of equipment, and they basically get an abatement for a three-year period of time in trade for job creation. So, it's a one, it's one of the few tools we have in our toolbox to help support job creation. And again, Fallon is gonna be considering that, and Jerry's, Jerry's helping out with that. If they do go that route, we will continue and help to be the administrator for that program as well. That's just generally how it's done in other counties, that we'll be the enterprise zone manager for both our zone and theirs as well. Gosh, other than that, I, I wanted to let you know, not related to our economic development work, but our Imagine Corvallis 2040 Visioning Group, they are working on pivoting to a community-driven model, where we're gonna be going out to the community to help glean some ideas about projects for the next five years. We want to thank Sean McGuire. He's been involved in our Community Engagement Strategy Work Group and has brought some great ideas, and we really appreciate his insights there as we look to this. It's gonna be a heavy lift through the summer and late fall as we get going on that, but we're pretty excited about that. The city, as you all may know, we are working on embracing and getting folks trained up on the IAP2, which is the International Association of Public Participation, and I just had the privilege to go through a two-week training on public participation, and I think that's gonna be really beneficial for all the different work that our office does. Really excited to begin thinking about that. We wanted to thank you guys for the ARPA funding that we got to support Benton County businesses, and I wanted to let you know that we've got it on our radar. We'll be bringing back to you the program outline for what most likely will be a revolving loan program, and so we want to put that together with the details and then bring that back to you to make sure it's meeting the goals that you have as well in terms of how we roll that out. So, stay tuned for that coming forward. And lastly, we, I'm working with our two outside funding past-through grants that we do for you guys, which is RAINN and our Small Business Development Center, SBDC, and we're gonna be bringing those back at the June 7th meeting to, for you all to take a look at and with a recommendation for those contracts for the next fiscal year. That was a lot. We, we remain down a person, which for us is 25% of our team, so we're still kind of trying to keep our heads above water, but I know so many folks are with departments and, and businesses that, like I said before, are down a person. But appreciate your graces. We're working through as much as we can with the folks that we do have on staff. So, with that, you know, Chair Wyeth, I'm happy to conclude and answer, answer any questions and have dialogue about any of those things that were interesting to y'all.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions or comments for Kate? Commissioner Malone?
Yep. Last week, Kate, we had a report from Sean McGuire, who brought in, I don't know if you can hear him somewhere, from a good company, and mentioned, this is speaking to electric charging stations, and the consultant mentioned that you have money available, it sounded like, as we speak, so a lot of these programs are in the future, or a little bit theoretical, but this one sounded like it was available. I don't know the hoops that would be required, but it definitely sounded worth checking into.
For sure. No, thank you. I've written that down, and I'll have Catherine and Jerry check that out. Appreciate you writing that up.
Well, it was exciting because so many of the programs are in the future, like you talked about them, connecting with Merkley's office, and yes, there may be something there, and hurry up and get your request in, and then wait for six months or a year, and we'll get back to you. But this DQ, well, first of all, it's a state program, and which means maybe fewer hoops available now. That's what I had.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Kate?
Kate, I guess my only question is about any work you're doing with Adair Village and their potential Main Streets project and the development of their downtown. Are you engaged with Pat and his community at this point?
And I'm sorry, it was a little, it cut out from- A little bit, Zan. The question was about the, the Oregon Main Street?
No.
Adair Village. At the report?
No, Adair Village.
Adair Village. Okay, I'm so sorry. It's funny. For some reason, Pat's was very clear, but Zan, yours, it's like it's on a different microphone, and just so you guys know, it was a little, little, Pat, Adair Village. Yes, thank you. Urban Renewal, I now understand the question. Indeed, we reached out to Pat, and I understand he has completed the land swap, which is going to allow them to look at creating a commercial core in Adair Village. And so, yes, we are helping Pat, we are gonna sort of act as project managers for that, and he'll work with an urban renewal consultant to help create a plan and report. But we're really excited about the potential for this project, which is to create a town center literally out of whole cloth and to utilize this exciting tool to see that happen. So, appreciate you asking about that, Zan. My understanding is, as I recall, he's talking about getting that, getting those meetings going over this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have a question. I apologize if I, if you said this and I just missed it, but are you investigating any specific sites for the electric chargers, the vehicle chargers? Or is it not to that?
Yes, I think, and I thought, I'm not gonna get all of these right, as I understand it, because this would be a bank of chargers, not just a mall. And so, I believe the areas that are being searched are sort of toward the south end of downtown, closer to the skate park. We wanted it somewhere near the city center, so folks could park and then still walk and, and, you know, be close to all the downtown amenities and such. But we also wanted it in a location that it could accommodate a number of spaces and, you know, basically take up a half or three-quarter of a block to, to do this work. Yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Kate before we move on to the next agenda item?
One quick last comment, and that is that-
It sounds like if you're picking up a project management for an enterprise zone in Fallon and for potentially urban renewal district up in Adair Village, you guys are gonna need even more staff. Are you, how are you thinking about moving ahead in terms of providing this county-wide level of service?
Yeah, no, it's a fantastic plan, and I appreciate you asking. I think the way I'm thinking about it, first, first is just trying to get the open position filled. We have a potential applicant. We are working with that person to see if we can negotiate a deal. That will help immensely. You know, the other component that we've got going here is that Jerry, Jerry's position is .80, it's not a 1.0, and so I have done some thinking about, is there a path forward to look at bringing him back to a 1.0, and how would that work? And, you know, if I could be quite frank, perhaps a consideration of coming back to you all with some sort of modest ask to increase our capabilities for the work that we're doing countywide as well. I have, I don't know what that would look like. I've just had some very, very early conversations with Joe and Rick, but wanted to get through first our outside funding contract to make sure those folks are taken care of, but since you asked and opened the door, I'll, I'll put it on your radar and say I may be coming back to, to have that policy conversation with you all.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Kate, very much. We always appreciate you coming and updating us, and next time, hopefully, we can all be in person, and we'll give you the heads up next time. How about that?
Yeah, I'll make a note of it, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody in the flesh. Thanks so much.
Sounds good. Have a great day. All right, next up on the agenda, we have the update from the Oregon Department of Forestry. And on my agenda, I have listed Leo Williamson and Michael Curran from Oregon Department of Forestry. Welcome.
Yeah, good morning, Chair Wyeth, other commissioners, and other county staff. So, for the record, my name is Michael Curran. I'm the District Forester for ODF's West Oregon District. Leo and Trask are joining me today, and I noticed there's some new folks that jumped on the call. I'll have them introduce themselves real quick, just so folks know who they are.
Yeah, again, for the record, my name is Leo Williamson, Protection Unit Forester for the- Protection Unit Forester for the Oregon Department of Forestry in Fallon.
And Trask Hodgson, Community Wildfire Forester out of the Dallas office with ODF.
All right, so my apologies for the dual, virtual and in-person ended up getting sick over the weekend, so I didn't think you guys wanted to be there, having and talking in person while I'm trying to present to you. So, with that, so you guys should have gotten a one-pager, front and back, from us, just with a high-level overview for a reminder of the services we provide, and then just kind of an organizational chart of our staff on the West Oregon District. So, hopefully, you guys got a chance to look that over. So, kind of what I'll do is I'll start over with some, some district updates, and then if we have time, we'll go over some statewide updates that would be pertinent for you guys to hear and go from there. So, and please, interrupt me if you guys have any questions as we're speaking, and we can address those as they come up. So, starting with our district update, we'll start with the org chart. As you guys heard, with the prior speaker, staffing issues and concerns are the norm for everybody, and that continues to plague us as well. We finally, we've been very fortunate as a district that we've had a lot of long-term staff stay with us for 30-plus years, and a lot of those staff are coming up on retirement, and they're taking advantage of it. So, with that, Ted Erdman, who used to be our Fallon with Unit Forester, who you guys are used to working with, he retired at the end of last year, and with that, I was able to hire Leo Williamson to be his replacement. Leo comes to us from our Toledo unit, so same district, so has a lot of familiarity with how we operate, so was able to promote him, and he's doing good things so far. And then the other person next to Leo there with Trask, he's new as of last November. He's our new Community Wildfire Forester, and again, he comes to us from our own district. We were able to promote him. He's got a lot of firefighting experience, and he's starting to do really good things for us in our Community Wildfire Grant Program. So, with that, kind of going through kind of our current business practices, so as of May 1st, all state offices finally reopened to the public. We were gonna reopen a couple different times in the past year and a half, but just due to increased case counts, we had to cancel that. But I can finally announce that we are open to the public and have our doors open, and it's good seeing folks back into our office and being able to help folks in person. So, glad to see that. And then, one last thing before we jump into our field programs is I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Benton County Sheriff's Office, in particular, the Forest Deputy Program that they've got. That, that program has been instrumental for us in having a dedicated deputy patrol our state lands, and just would like to continue to see that move forward into the future, and I know other landowners within the county are thankful for that program, and it's been very good for all of us, so just want to give them a shout-out. And it seems like a new deputy, Deputy Williams, will be joining us, so looking forward to meet him and start to work with him and move forward. So, with that, we'll go ahead and jump into our field programs. We'll start with our fire protection program. So, last, last summer, the 2021 fire season was a big change from what 2020 was. The Labor Day event of 2020 was pretty significant for the district, as you guys all recall, from the Echo Mountain Complex and then the fires that occurred in the Cascade Range. We went from having our highest acres burned and most expensive fire season in the last 10 years in the summer of 2020 to having our least amount of fires and least acres burned in the summer of '21. So, that was a welcome relief for, for our staff. And with that, I'll go ahead and pass it off to Leo, and he can talk about some particular fires in general to Benton County of note for you guys.
Yeah, so the 2021 season in Benton County was pretty much on par with the rest of the state, relatively slight initial attack for the district. We had one fire built, and it was, it's called the Maple Fire in Southwest Benton County, close to the county line, with Lincoln, our neighbor there. Same as significant, you know, it really only just over happening for us. It was a great catch by our crews, you know, within, within 20 minutes, 20 to 30 minutes, and they got that fire under control. Kind of put it in perspective with 2021 fire season as a whole, for our protection in Benton County, we had 41 total fire times. 10 of those were typical fire, meaning we had to take some action on them. Again, the largest-
Those are just over a half an acre, so really happy with our aggressive, quick initial attack on those, and kudos to the crew for taking care of that. We had two non-statistical fires, meaning mutual aid with some of our partners here in the county, and we had 29 fires, which were non-fire crew action, meaning this was something that was reported that we didn't have to take action onto control.
Okay, so, kind of the main question we always get this time of year is, what is fire season gonna be like this summer? And I'd say the, the moisture we've been receiving is welcome relief. You know, we had a fairly wet fall in first start to the year, and then about mid-January, into February and March, and the first part of April, we actually were relatively dry to where we actually had some of our forecasters calling for large fire potential in central Oregon in the month of April, which some of those, some of those folks have been doing that for 30-plus years, and they've never predicted large fire potential in April in central Oregon. And then thankfully, around mid-April- And then thankfully around mid-April, the rain started, and the rain started statewide for the most part. And we got quite a bit of snow with that, and it's just now stopping. So things are looking much better for us in terms of fire season. You know, we are, you know, now that the rain stopped, especially in central Oregon, you know, once things start to dry out, their fire danger is going to start to significantly increase. But for us locally, we're actually sitting pretty good so far. Our fuel moistures are in a good spot, and we're expecting probably a later start to fire season this summer if things stay like they are right now, which is good news for us. You know, there's a lot that can be said for the weather the whole year, but when push comes to shove, it's May and June that really dictate what fire season will be like for us. We can have a really wet first start of the year, but if we have a dry May and June, there's a chance we're going to have a fairly busy fire season. But if we have a wet May and June, there's a good chance that fire season isn't going to be as severe locally for us. So with that, we've had a fairly wet May so far. We'll see what June brings us, but right now, we're looking at a fairly average fire season for us moving forward. But like I said, the weather in June will really dictate what the rest of that will look like for us. So at least locally for Benton County, we're not seeing anything too crazy that we're going to have a severe fire season. But like I said, we'll kind of see what the weather the rest of the spring brings and, and go from there. So with that, Leo and Trask will talk through a Community Wildfire Program update to talk about our fuels reduction grants that we currently have in place for Benton County.
Yeah, so for Benton County.
We've got one grant area funded and active in the Monroe area, so just west of the city limits there, essentially to the county line. That particular grant expires at the end of this year. However, there's a two-year extension option on that. So depending on expenditures and, and project progress there, we'll kind of look at that as we get closer. The other area we have is, is in the Renn Hill area, and that expires in March of 2023. Again, both of those grant areas are funded and active projects going on. To date, in the Monroe area, we've got 37 acres treated and in the Renn Grand Ron Brand that we have, which are lumped together there. We've got 71 acres treated in Renn specifically. You know, there's, we're continuing with applications for future project areas and project funding within Benton County and the rest of our district, as well as continue to stay plugged in on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan update that's going on right now. So hoping that between all that, we can continue to be in a good spot for these community assistance programs and continue to put some of those grand dollars to work here on the landscape in Benton County.
I have a couple of questions about that, please. One is how you all are expecting to use the new fire risk maps when those come out? And what role will they play in determining where some of that fire treatment is occurring? And the other is that, as I understand it, there is a preference to fund areas where ODF crews will be doing most of the work rather than the local community? And I was just wondering about that also.
Yeah, I can go ahead and try to add one, and then Leo and Trask can add anything. So as far as the, the new wildfire risk map, nothing's really going to change for us once that new map gets created. I mean, the biggest change is going to be the wooey areas that are defined in that map. And really moving forward, we're still going to use that map to help prioritize what wooey areas that we focus on for getting grant funding. Like just speaking locally for Benton County, we know there's a lot of interest around the communities in and near Corvallis for fuels reduction work. So we're, we're actually working internally to try to get those areas to get grant monies again for. For a lot of them, we've already had, have had grants on the books and they've closed out already. So we're just trying to go through the process to try to get more dollars available for them. That will take a couple of years probably, because it's tough to get money again for communities that we've already had them on back-to-back years. So we may have to take, have a little bit of a pause there. But we are working internally to try to get more money for those folks when opportunities arise. But as far as the risk map goes, I don't see us that changing any, at least as far as how we operate moving forward. We're still going to use it to help us prioritize what, what communities we focus on, so. And then your other question, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You went in and out a little bit for me, but as far as, are, are we only focusing on communities that we provide protection in? Is that correct?
No.
Having looked at one of the applications for one of the communities that was not funded this past year, one of the comments in the application form is that there's a preference given if it will be an ODF crew that would actually be doing the mitigation work in the field. And I was wondering about that.
Okay, I guess, do you know what community that was?
Vineyard Mountain.
Vineyard Mountain, okay. I guess I'm not familiar with that request. Trask, and I don't know if, if you're aware of it, was that part of our Senate Bill 762 grant?
Specifically Senate Bill 762. The grants that we have currently in Monroe and Renn are Western states grants, and those are federal dollars. The Senate Bill 762 is state stuff, so it's a completely different program. Given that it was a state program, you know, some of those applications were given bonus points to utilizing the fuels reduction crews that some districts have, and we do not have a fuels reduction crew here currently, so, yeah.
So we were a little disadvantaged in that competition.
A little bit, yeah, it was a minor, you know, in the scoring, it was a minor thing. Ultimately, it was the, the risk rating map that is used.
Yeah.
In the, you know, our, our whole area being a low risk when, when put up against the rest of the state, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, and that was top right, because there. Dollars available through that grant program to be available statewide, right? So the agency made the decision to try to prioritize high and extreme risk ratings in communities. And unfortunately, with us not sitting in higher, extreme in any of our communities, they just didn't prioritize that through the grant process, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, I, I noticed the Community Wildfire Forester position is vacant in Philomath. Is that, that's the position Allison filled till she moved on? And I, I thought a while back, I heard that that, that position had been filled, but.
So we did, we did fill one of our district positions out of the Dallas office, which, which Trask is currently in. That second position for the district houses at the Philomath Unit. We're waiting on getting concrete confirmation that we will in fact have future funding for that before we start the recruitment. But our intention is to fill that position, hopefully come sometime this, this fall or, or winter.
Okay, because I was impressed with Allison's efforts in getting, getting out in the community and would like to see that position filled in Philomath, Philomath District.
Certainly, we, we echo you right there.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect, and so I.
And I just, I'd add to that, Commissioner Malone. Those positions are tied to federal funding, so we just, for us, we got to make sure that those federal funds are insured showing up, because we don't want to get somebody hired and then realize something happened and we didn't get those funds like we were expecting. Just because we don't want to mess with anybody's livelihoods and thinking they have a job, and then in reality, they don't. So I, I think we're in a good spot. All signs are pointing that those funds are going to show up. So hopefully next fall, Leo will be able to recruit for that position. And this time next year, we'll have two Community Wildfire Foresters in front of us.
Great, well, thank you.
So I have a quick question about the Community Wildfire Program, and you mentioned 37 acres by Monroe, 71 acres by Renn, and that they were treated. And I'm just, what is, what does that mean, that they're treated?
So the grant money is tied to a strictly fuels reduction. So removing brush, limbing trees, thinning trees, and dense stands to reduce continuity of fuels vertically and horizontally in and around the house. So the immediate zone, zero five, 30 feet, and then the extended area, you know, greater property, depending on what folks are interested in, what they have the means to accomplish. So when we say treated, we're just referencing that, that process in general.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
I, I know what it means. We did that around our place in Kings Valley.
Yeah, I could do that.
I, I think it's a great, great program. And like I say, having someone to get out and, and tell people what treated means and how much money is available and for your particular project, and then what's expected.
You get a gold star, Pat.
And I, I am, I am in Dallas, but I am servicing the whole district. So I have been out in those communities still, doing the outreach and what have you. So we'll just have better capacity here, hopefully shortly.
Great.
Okay, I guess any other questions on our Community Wildfire Program before we move on? Okay, you know, and I'd also just, real quick, too, as part of our Community Wildfire Program, we'll continue to remain engaged on the Benton County CWPP update and working with you all to make sure that gets in a good spot finalized here, hopefully soon, once the risk map can get completed, so. And then just one last item for protection. If you guys recall, there is a county committee that's put in place called Forest Land Classification Committee. And that committee, the role of that committee is to essentially determine what, what landowners will be receiving wildland fire protection from ODF, if they're deemed as forest land or not. So Leo's got a quick update for you on that, and then we can move on to state forests.
Yeah, so committees still active, still fully running?
We usually have those in March. We are finished our annual review and continuing with those. The next five-year review for that committee is going to be due in spring of 2025. And then just to put this on you guys, a heads up for a forthcoming request to nominate Pat for renewal on that committee. It looks like his term is expiring at the end of this year, if I've got my dates correct.
I think that's right.
So stay tuned for that request.
Okay. Well, I'll have to talk to my colleagues to see if they will reappoint me, but.
Coming, coming down the pipe, though.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, now I'd also just like to say thank you, Commissioner Malone, for being able to serve on that committee. It's been super beneficial for us and everything. So yeah, thank you for your service on being able to do that for us, so. All right.
I, I worry about, everybody knows their home territory, but just getting out and seeing what, what the situation is like in different parts of the county was a, a real education, so. I am glad I have been on that for about 10 years, so.
What, I'm not, that's, that's fine.
Uh, we are hearing some, yeah, Ingo, we're hearing some noise coming from you.
And I have lost audio of the commissioners, yes. Do you guys can hear me?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Yeah, I still not able to hear you, but. I'm going to go ahead and get started on state forests, and just let me know when you're back on. As far, as far as the state forests update, so as you recall, there's two types of state lands that we manage within ODF, the first one being our Board of Forestry lands, and those are lands that any revenue generated from those from timber sales. Two-thirds of that revenue goes back to the county and other local taxing districts. And then the other third goes back into our Forest Development Fund, and that's what's used to fund our state forest program. And then we also have our Department of State Lands, Common School Lands, and revenue received from those goes directly back into the Common School, statewide Common School Fund after our operating expenses are paid out of that. So with that, for Benton County, as far as Board of Forestry is concerned, which are lands that directly, you guys directly receive revenue from, just as a reminder, there's a little over 8,300 acres in Benton County that goes back to the Benton County and the local taxing districts. So kind of a revenue update for you all. So for FY '21, so last fiscal year, we were able to provide a little over $130,000 to Benton County and other local taxing districts. Revenue to date for the current fiscal year, so FY '22, we've brought in 407,000, so quite a bit of an increase from, from last fiscal, so. And then looking forward into our FY '23 AOP, we have one sale that's identified in Benton County on our Board of Forestry lands. And we are estimating that that could bring in up to a little over $834,000 in revenue to the county. So with that, it's not like that money will come in all at once in FY '23. Our timber sale contracts are anywhere from a two- to three-year period. So you'll see that, that revenue spread out over a span of a couple of years, depending on when the operator can get in and complete the sale. So just, just an awareness for you, as far as what revenues are coming into the county and going from there. So the other state forest business I've got is part of our statewide update, so I'll cover that later. Any questions in particular on state forests before we move on to our Forest Resources Program? Okay. I'm not sure, I'm still not able to hear you guys, just for awareness, so. And I see a note that says caller five is back up but muted, so I don't know if that's the, the issue or not. And if you want, just give me a thumbs up and I can keep going, or if you want me to hold on. Okay, I saw a thumbs up, so I'm going to keep going and let me know if I need to stop. So, so our Forest Resources Division, formerly called our Private Forest Division, recently was renamed this last year. Just as a reminder, so our Forest Resources Division is in charge of administering the Oregon Forest Practices Act. And with that, Leo's got, we'll give you an update on that division. But just real quick, just for awareness, so you guys kind of know what's going on, on forest operations within Benton County. And, you know, thankfully for this, the log market has stayed pretty steady throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, which is good news, right? Because we've been able to keep, folks have been able to keep working. Timber sales have been able to, to keep moving along, and mills have been able to stay busy, which is good news for everybody. You know, recently looking at the last year, especially the beginning of 2022, there was a pretty sharp uptick in the log market. So folks got pretty busy at the first of the year, and now that's starting to balance back out a little bit. So activity has slowed down a bit, but in all, the market, log market has stayed fairly steady, which I think is good news for everybody. So with that, I will pass it off to Leo, and he'll give more of a Benton County specific update in regards to our Forest Resources Division.
Michael can't hear the other parties as well.
Okay, okay. Sure. So why don't we take a 10-minute break and try to get that figured out?
I could represent that to the group, too.
method and see if this is working. So let's see. We are gonna go ahead and have Leo resummarize what his comments that he just made and go from there.
Yeah. So again, just discussing the.
Sorry. Does he have to unmute the laptop when he talks?
No.
No? Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
Just to resummarize the Forest Resources Division update, quick rundown on notifications for the year, 467 for 2021, which is up from 445 in 2020, likely a reflection of the log market. Again, quick recap on our work staying busy in partnership with the federal agencies, NRCS and FSA administering those federal dollars on the landscape here in Benton County, things like habitat restoration.
We can't hear you. Yeah. So I'm reading a note that people cannot hear Leo. Okay.
Nope, we can't.
So should we try having him unmute on the laptop, or is that still a no?
Can everybody hear me okay?
Everybody hear me okay? Yep.
Okay, again, a quick recap on our Forest Resources Division update, 467 notifications for calendar year 2021, up from 445 in 2020. We continue to stay busy with our federal partners and incentive programs through NRCS and FSA. So we're doing things like habitat restoration, fuels reduction, forest health projects, putting together management plans. Just, just really happy with that relationship there and looking forward to continue that moving forward. And then the last note was the Oregon Small Woodlands Convention, statewide convention at the end of June. Benton County is lucky enough to host that this year, given that our own Crestmont Farms was nominated as Tree Farmer of the Year for their outstanding work. And again, we're, we're super happy to have them and a great partnership with Crestmont Farms. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Comments or questions for Leo? All right. Next topic.
Okay. So I'll just keep this brief since our time's almost up. So you guys can move on with the agenda. A few quick agency-wide statewide updates for you all of just kind of what's happening within ODF as a whole here. So my last year, we've seen a lot of turnover in our executive leadership within Salem and the field. So we've gotten a new state forester in Kyle Mukamoto, excited to have him on board. He's starting to do really good things for the agency. We've got a new deputy state forester. We've got two new area directors that serve as our primary field leadership around the state. Then also have two new division chiefs within our fire protection program and our state forest program. So a lot of work going on and getting all those folks up to speed, but some really good people in place. Looking forward to see where they can take us moving forward. And as time and opportunities allow, we're trying to get those folks out to the field offices for various tours, things like that, so they can meet some of the local community members, local elected officials, and local landowners as well. So when opportunities arise, we'll try to see if they can come out and interact with you all if the opportunity presents itself. So I mentioned Senate Bill 762, which was passed this last legislative, this last long legislative session. This was a big game changer for both ODF and the state fire marshal. Three main goals with Senate Bill 762 was creating fire-adapted communities. So working on increasing the defensible space around the communities within the state of Oregon. Second one being developing a safe and effective wildfire response. So adding the much-needed additional capacity for boots-on-the-ground firefighter, firefighters, and also firefighter leadership positions. And then also working to increase resiliency across Oregon's landscape. So working on, working on this all-lands approach from federal land ownership, state lands, and private ownership, and trying to come up with landscape, landscape-scale restoration projects. So as part of Senate Bill 762, the agency has added quite a bit of staff to help within our fire response in both Salem and the field. And locally here within West Oregon, we've been able to increase months' work for three of And locally here within West Oregon, we've been able to increase months' work for three of our lead firefighter positions, known as our forest officers. And then we also added six additional firefighters across the district, two out of each of our three offices. So excited to have that additional capacity onboard this summer, once fire season gets here. So working with our Forest Resources program. So I'm not sure if you guys have heard or not, but there was the recent private forest accord legislation that was passed. This was a, this was a pretty big, significant change in the Oregon Forest Practices Act. And we're working through getting all the rules in place as an agency. The governor's office worked with both the environmental community and local industrial landowners and small woodland owners to really bring them both to the table and work through solutions to the Oregon Forest Practices Act that they both can agree on moving forward. And they were able to do that. And now the agency's tasked with getting all that put into rule and various timelines in order to get all that done. But we are working as an agency to get that completed, so. And then with state forests, we're still continuing to work towards a habitat conservation plan. And what this will help us do is get operational certainty moving forward when it comes to the risk of endangered species. And so we're working with the federal services to get a permit from them in order to do so. And kind of the big timeframe for whether or not we adopt an HCP or not will be in March of 2023. And that's when the HCP will go in front of the Board of Forestry for them to decide whether or not it gets adopted. So, you know, all that stuff's fairly high-level. We can get into the weeds a lot with those last four items, but don't want to take up too much of your time. And so we can be available for questions if you have any immediate ones or if you guys would like some follow-up after this. Happy to help as we can.
Thank you, Michael. Any comments or questions for Michael? Commissioner Ogier?
Hi. Sorry about that. My question is really about the HCP and the private forest accord. And it might be useful for us to have you come back at some point, Michael, and talk a little bit more about the changes under the HCP and what that might look like for our district, just so we understand that in a little bit more granular way in our area. I think it would help us as we meet with our fellow commissioners and help in the whole process of moving forward.
What I can do is work with our staff in Salem. And between one of them and myself, we can get some time in front of you to kind of go over an overarching view of what that HCP is and what it would look like, just so you guys have a better understanding. Any particular timeframe for when you guys would like that?
I think that there's not a rush. So I'm not sure about the, how it's moving through right now. I think there's the whole NEPA process going on, and I'm not as familiar with the timeline as Commissioner Wise is. But perhaps early fall, perhaps after fire season's over. I don't, I will leave that partly to you.
Okay. Nope, I will, I'll work with our staff in Salem. And we'll get back in touch with you and try to figure out what a good timeframe is and go from there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, I'm curious if the Lynn County lawsuit affects your approach to forestry or... I mean, that's been grinding on for four or five years. Does that, does that affect your operations?
At the moment, no. I mean, we're still operating under our current forest management plan moving forward. You know, time will tell to see how things move forward with that lawsuit, with the recent ruling that came out. But as terms of just us, how we operate right now, nothing's really changing at the current moment.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions on this agenda item? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much for coming today and sharing all that great information with us. We really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
In case there's questions with the state fire marshal presentation and the county for a grand discussion, we'll talk about that later.
Sure. And could you just repeat the first part of that? I didn't get back to my button quick enough.
Oh, we'll stay on for the next couple of presentations in case there's any questions for us.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay. So that will take us to our next agenda item, which is update from the Oregon State Fire Marshal with Brett Griffiths, Office of the State Fire Marshal. Welcome. We're just taking a moment to get everything settled in.
Which of these top keys turns the mic on?
I don't know.
Because you turned it off with F1.
Oh, no, this one. I think we need, I think we need to unmute that laptop. And we thank everyone for their patience as we are working out these technical difficulties.
Okay. Awesome. All right. Thanks. Again, good morning, commissioners. My name is Brett Griffiths. I work for the Oregon Office of State Fire Marshal. I work in our Emergency Response Services Division, and I'm assigned to Benton County as the mobilization coordinator. Thank you for allowing me to meet with you today to highlight our office's involvement in wildfire response and how we will need to engage with the board if a wildfire in Benton County is threatening structures outside of a fire district and state resources are required to mitigate that incident. Let me first provide a little background about my specific program. In the spring of 2021, OSFM assigned regional mobilization coordinators, first of five separate regions, now seven, to work with local fire agencies to facilitate a more collaborative and efficient response to the increasing threat and occurrence of wildfires. As regional mobilization coordinators, we are available as a local representative and liaison between the fire service and state resources. We also work with all other partners connected to a wildfire response or any other incident requiring state assistance, including the sheriff's office, county emergency manager, Oregon Department of Forestry, and others.
This conference will now be recorded.
Our work is directly focused on implementing our recently launched Initiative Response Ready Oregon. In addition to Response Ready Oregon, we also, as has been mentioned, launched our Fire Adapted Oregon Initiative. Our newly created community risk reduction program also places regional coordinators called Fire Risk Reduction Specialists across the state to assist communities in preparing for and mitigating the impacts of wildfire. With a focus on vulnerable and underrepresented communities, the program recently made a grant available to schools and hospitals for fuel mitigation around their buildings. And in Benton County, there were three schools that took advantage of that grant. Ashbrook Independent School, Corvallis Waldorf Association, and the Lynn-Benton Community College Benton Center. Another tool our office is implementing under the Fire Adapted Oregon Initiative is the adoption of a defensible space code. This code was authorized when the legislature passed Senate Bill 762 in the 2021 legislative session. This bill required the Oregon Department of Forestry to define the wildland-urban interface, that geographical area where structures and other human development meets or intermingles with wildland vegetative fuel. ODF was further asked to map, as has been mentioned in this meeting already, map all areas in Oregon that meet this definition and then identify the level of risk of wildfire impact. The defensible space code will be applicable in all areas identified as in high or extreme risk. The code is currently under the adoption process, and our office is looking to hire more than a dozen new deputy state fire marshals to assist with its application. Since this is a new requirement for property owners, our approach will be one of education and collaboration. Working with our community risk reduction program, we hope to incentivize, excuse me, incentivize compliance as much as possible. If there are any questions about the community risk reduction program or the defensible space code, Fire Risk Reduction Specialist Stephanie Stafford is here. And then supervising deputy state fire marshal Jason Kane was supposed to log in. I don't know if he was able to make it, but I can get any questions to him if there are any questions. Stephanie, again, is also available for any questions or comments. Returning to my specific purpose for being here today, I want to provide some information about the state's involvement in wildfire response. In the event a wildfire threatens homes or communities and it has exceeded the capacity of the responding fire agency and their mutual aid partners, the county fire defense board chief may request assistance from the state. After determining the need, OSFM will request the governor enact the Conflagration Act. Once enacted, the state fire marshal will mobilize structural firefighting resources from across the state to assist. We will also mobilize one of our Type II All-Hazard Incident Management Teams to manage the incident on behalf of the local fire district, thus allowing them to manage and respond to other local calls. When the Conflagration Act is enacted, all firefighting costs become the responsibility of the state. The IMT will bring all available resources necessary to manage the incident. In order to assume command of the incident, our IMT will request a delegation of authority from the fire chief of the agency having jurisdiction. In areas that are outside of a fire district, the IMT will seek to obtain a delegation of authority from the board, from you. The reason we will look to the Board of Commissioners is due to the authority given to the board in ORS 476.330 to prevent and control fire outside of city boundaries or rural fire protection district boundaries. This authority allows the board to establish and maintain firefighting and fire control facilities and contract with existing fire control agencies, individuals, associations, corporations, cities, or rural fire protection districts. Thankfully, the risk of a large wildfire requiring state assistance in Benton County is not as high as other parts of the state. However, it's still a possibility we need to be prepared for. Last year and last fire season, we received delegations of authority to provide structure protection from Douglas County, Clamath County, Lake, Deschutes, Jefferson, Wallawa, and Lane Counties. I've provided a map, and it's the one that's displayed up here that shows structures that are outside of a fire district. Data put together by our GIS folks indicate that there are 645 structures in Benton County that are outside of a fire district. However, 242 of the structures are within an Oregon Department of Forestry District or what we call underprotected. So their land is protected, but there is no fire district that covers the structures. So it's kind of hard to see, and I apologize that it's difficult to see. But the green triangles in that map are the structures that are within ODF territory. And then the red dots are structures that are outside of both ODF districts and fire protection districts. So just to kind of walk through what it would look like, in the event of a wildfire that's threatening structures outside of a fire district, the local fire service would respond initially. Statute provides authority for them to respond as long as they have approval of their board or city council and are not leaving their home area unprotected. If the incident exceeds the capacity of the responding agency and mutual aid partners, they will reach out to the county fire defense board chief, who in Benton County is Chief Tom Miller of Falloma Fire, who will then work with myself and the county to request state resources. Once our resources arrive, the incident management team, incident commander, and then OSFM agency administrator will work with the county, with you as the board, on a delegation of authority and determine responsibilities under the agreement. Again, if state resources are brought in to address and manage the incident, all costs are the responsibility of the state. So with that and with the board's permission, like Chief Miller, to maybe talk about some of his concerns that he has with structures that are outside of a fire district.
All right. So in order to do that, we will have you mute that laptop. And Chief Miller, if you would like to go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, kind of mirror what Brett was saying. So some of the areas that we all are well aware of, the Green Berry Gap is probably the most glaring in our county if you look at the map. And so the way it works right now, if we have a fire in there, in that area, then dispatch will call the neighboring fire chiefs and ask if we are willing to respond to that area. And so we can either say yes, we will, or we won't. The way it works in my fire district, I can only speak for my fire district, but we have a fee schedule that we charge the property owner for our time, our equipment, and also any backfill that happens to cover our districts while we're there. So I could give you an example. We had one on 99 in the wildland of structured fire. It was delayed response, obviously, because it wasn't in a fire district. Us and Monroe went out there, and I know that they were given a bill at the end of it. So that's kind of the way that works. And so I think what Brett's trying to drive home here is that that area is... If there is a fire in there, then it's ultimately the Board of Commissioners' responsibility to, you know, call for the conflagration through the fire defense board process. And I think he's probably going to talk a little bit about delegation of authority here in a little bit, which is an actual form that you guys will have to sign. So we don't really have clear direction on how the Board of Commissioners wants to proceed with that. And so we just want some clarification on if there was a fire in any of those red areas there, that how do you want us to proceed as a fire defense board and the fire chiefs of Benton County?
Thank you. I might just add to that, that, you know, in addition to the, to those homes that are in the Green Berry Gap, you know, there could also be a need for a conflagration for those unprotected structures that are in ODF territory. It's just, just anywhere where the locals have responded. It's just, just anywhere where the locals have responded, but they need state help. They've, you know, because, I mean, you know, they have their own territory to take care of, and while they can go out and provide initial attack, if something is a large incident that's going to be over multiple operational periods, likely going to have to have state resources come in, and that's where the board will, will be involved with signing a delegation of authority, so that our incident management team can manage that incident on behalf of the board. So, I did provide, and hopefully you've received copies of the delegation of authority templates. Also have provided a document that we've put together that just kind of outlines the board's involvement with the conflagration, and kind of what that, what that looks like. And then I've also provided a conflagration request form, which is basically just the information that we will try to obtain to determine the need, the need for a conflagration, and also what resources we need to, we need to bring out. Myself, as the, as the regional mobilization coordinator, will likely be gathering that information. That form doesn't necessarily have to be done every time we request, or every time there's a request for assistance, but it's just, we provide it to you so that you know kind of what we're looking at. It's basically, how large is the fire? Do we have evacuations in place? Have you exhausted mutual aid? Things of, things of that nature. So, with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ojero.
I guess my question is probably for Chief Miller, and it's about our local capacity to respond, and we've been fortunate that local agencies have been able to step in. But, and I'm wondering, is the only scenario when we might want to call in, to delegate our authority, when it's, there's a massive fire, and all of our local agencies are involved elsewhere? I'm trying to visualize the kind of situation where we would really need to exercise this authority as the Board of Commissioners in the gap areas.
Hopefully, I'm not reverbing with Brent's microphone. So to answer your question, Commissioner Ojero, the way it works is, we have a Lynn Benton agreement, mutual aid agreement, and so we, we actually are expanding not only Benton County, but a lot of Lynn Counties on our alarm system. So, we have what we call box alarms, and box alarms are 14 personnel with six pieces of equipment per box. So, in our, in the Lynn Benton system, we have four alarms we can go to before we would actually initiate a request for a conflagration. So that's the kind of, if you kind of visualize that, that's how it works, is we would get to the fourth alarm, we can say, we can't handle this on our own, and now we need assistance from the state. We, all of us, Lynn and Benton Counties work together to make sure that we don't send too many resources out of the county, that we cannot step up and, and cover. And so, we would not send out more strike teams or similar out of the county if we didn't feel that we could not backfill and fill those positions. Hope that answers your question.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Ojero?
It's close. I'm not completely sure, still. I guess I'm really trying to just understand, is it in the case of a really significant local fire, and other fires in other places, that we would most likely want to declare a conflagration and delegate our authority to the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office? And, so how, how probable is such an event? And what exactly do we need to have in place in order to be ready for that, without putting too much strain on our local fire departments?
Brent, do you want to take out?
The probability, as I've mentioned before, the probability for such an incident in Benton County is pretty low. However, we, we are seeing wildfires happen in counties that haven't seen them. And so, as regional mobilization coordinators, what we are doing is, is going around to each of our counties and meeting with commissioners to talk to them about this delegation of authority, because it is new for a lot of, a lot of counties, for sure, that, one, the occurrence of wildfires, and then, two, the board's authority to delegate, the board's ability to delegate authority to the state fire marshal's office to address that incident. Again, you know, the probability is low, but if it is a local incident that exceeds the capacity of the locals, that's where the state can, can come in and help. I will, I will state, however, that we are doing other things to try and keep fires small and out of communities, and keep them from becoming a conflagration. We have available to us, again, as a result of Senate Bill 762, the ability to preposition resources around the state. And so, if we feel like that there is something that may indicate that there's an incident that exceeds the capacity of the, of the local fire service, we can preposition resources. I'm working with both Lynn and Benton Counties on a combined plan to, if we preposition resources here within the area. And if we, if we did, we would have those, those resources available if there was an incident, that, and those resources could come in and supplement the local fire service. And again, with the hope that we keep that fire small and out of, and out of, out of communities. They would not, again, we would not have to, in a request of conflagration, they would simply come in, supplement the local resources, work under the command of that incident commander. Again, all those costs would be our costs, since those are state resources, even though we're supplementing the locals. If we do not have resources prepositioned in the area, we also, again, under Senate Bill 762, have the ability to send resources, resources on what we call immediate response. So that is, resources that we could come in, bring in from Marion County, or up from Lane County, to, again, come in and supplement those local resources on that incident, to try and keep that fire small. And all of those are, are costs that we're responsible for, and would not require the Conflagration Act to be, to be enacted. And then finally, we have entered into agreement with the Oregon Department of Forestry to be able to use any aircraft that they have available. And so, we actually used one of their aircraft last summer on a fire down, down in Lane County. So, another tool that we're able to use, again, without the Conflagration Act being enacted, we can, if there's an aircraft available, and that, there's a fire that's threatening structures, we can, we can request that aircraft, and have that come in and assist those ground units to try and keep that fire small and out of community. So, I think that, again, that, you know, point, point is, is, I guess the overall point, likelihood here in Benton County, just because of where we are geographically, risk is low, but we've got some other tools as well that will help that. Again, purpose, my purpose today is just to provide some information to you as the board, to let you know that if things, if we have that bad day, unfortunately, hopefully we won't, but if we have that bad day, we will be looking to work with the board on a delegation of authority, so that those state resources can, can come in, and one of our incident management teams can, can respond to that incident on your behalf, and mitigate it. So.
Good, Brent.
Yes. How, I think you understand, we have to have a, the fire has to be uncontrolled for probably over 48 hours, or to extend past 48 hours, and local response.
Wow.
Well, I think what you're talking about is, not necessarily, I guess.
Short answer? I just kind of feel like they want a linear timeline. We have to have behavior operations in the period if you think it's going to exceed our abilities.
Yeah.
Typically, it's in like 48 hours, we have to try to.
No, not necessarily. If, you know, if that fire is so big, it just overwhelms you from the, from the get-go, we're gonna, we're gonna come in and help, if, if we're requested. There is, I think maybe what you're referencing, Chief, is the mutual aid agreements and, and those time periods, and that could be a factor. Your mutual aid agreements are typically, you correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, typically 12 hours. And, and so that's what the agreements are between fire service agencies, is that, is that they'll provide that reciprocal mutual aid for a time period, and once that, once that time period has elapsed, and that's when we start to consider, well, they will start to consider bringing in state resources. So, if there's any timeline associated with, with, with an incident, that would, that would be what, what that would be about.
Let's see, like, County Council Vance Carney, did you want to add something?
I just want to ask a question about.
You have to unmute yourself.
About your unprotected areas map, you've got the legend describe the green crosshatching and the red crosshatching, but there's an awful lot, a lot of yellow crosshatching, that I can't tell whether that's completely unprotected, whether that's covered by some other entity. What does the green crosshatching represent? Because that's a lot, awful lot of area. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad. The yellow, the yellow.
So the yellow is both an ODF and a, and a structural fire department. It's just overlaid there.
Okay, thanks. The way it looks, it looks like that's all uncovered, so that, that's good information to pass along.
Yes. Thank you for the question.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. And then we're going to go to Commissioner Malone, and then I have some questions, too. Go ahead, Commissioner Malone.
I'm curious how this new structure, the delegation of authority, how that's different from what's currently in place. I'm modestly familiar with mutual aid and kind of going up the food chain for accessing resources that the local entities can't, can't handle. So, I guess that's, that's the question, is, how is, what's being proposed different than the current structure?
Yeah, so. So, what we're talking about here is an incident that is outside of any established fire district, that while there is statutory authority for the locals to respond to that incident, if that incident exceeds their capacity, and they have to return to, you know, to home orders, either because it's the mutual aid agreement, or the mutual aid time period has elapsed, or it's just larger than what they can handle, because there is no, where we would normally get a delegation of authority from the fire chief if that incident was within a fire district. We, because there's no established fire district in those areas, then that's where we would, we would come to the, to the board to get that delegation authority. So that, it would be authority given to the, to our office for us to manage that incident on your behalf.
Okay, thank you.
So, was it along that same page?
Kind of.
Go ahead. Hide my map here. Commissioner Ojero.
My question is, so I, the, the gap areas are pretty clear to me, the Greenberry Gap, and then that area that's up off of Petty Bone up there, that little ridge area that are, where there's a complete gap, but then, the, what's shown as green triangles on the map that are covered by ODF, but not covered, the structures aren't covered by any fire district, there are a lot of those. So, what I'm seeing is that, of course, it's going to be really important to work very closely with ODF, and, and, but in those areas, we will also have to be, will we have to delegate the authority, or is it ODF that delegates the authority? That's my question.
For structure protection, it would be the board.
Okay, okay, so.
ODF has got the authority to protect.
So I'm assuming that we would be working very closely with our emergency manager, Brian Lee, and he would tell us, okay, board, it's time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I would like to back up a little. I thought I understood this, and I'm a little bit confused. So, number one, just to kind of help me understand, what are some of the reasons why these structures would be not in a fire district? Is it a choice by the property owner, or?
Chief Miller may be able to answer that better. I think that I, that I know. I know, I also cover Douglas County, and I know we, there are about 7,000 unprotected structures in Douglas County. There are areas where they have had the chance to come into a fire district and have chose not to, but there are other areas within the county that it's not feasible for them to be served by a fire department. So, I don't, I don't know, you know, the situation here in Benton County, but I'm sure part of it is because there's not a fire district that is, where it's feasible for them to be, to be served.
Straight. The ag lands in particular, the Greenberry Gap mostly, there are relatively few structures, and lots and lots of agricultural land, and the farmers have capacity to be the first strike and to put out those fires, and haven't wanted to be in a fire district. But, I think that part of what concerns me even more is all of those uncovered structures that are in lands with ODF coverage. And if there were to be a big fire in one of those areas of heavy rural residential development, if you will, in forest conservation land, then there's potential for a real problem. And, and some of them are just not contiguous to a district, or they are not set up so their roads can't handle any fire equipment coming in, or, you know, all of those things. So, yeah.
Okay, and I saw that Michael had his hand up. Wait, okay, hold on. I saw Michael had his hand up.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to add, just for awareness for the commissioners, right, whenever there's a new fire on the landscape, you know, ODF, so whether it's myself, whether it's Leo, or someone else that's covering for us at the time, you know, we're in constant communication with either Chief Miller being the fire defense board chief, and/or the local fire chief, whatever the district has the fire in, local fire district has the fire in it, or if it's threatening it. And depending on what values are at risk, i.e. structures, in this scenario, right, you know, we, we're in early conver, we get into early conversations with the fire defense board and the county emergency manager very quickly right out the gate, to where hopefully we're staying ahead of this. I mean, some of this happens fairly quick, depending on how big the fire is, how fast it's spreading, you know, what the weather forecast is, what the outlook is. But, just know from a process standpoint, that the local fire chiefs and ODF are constantly talking during fire season, especially when the fire is on the landscape, to try to stay ahead of this. So we would be getting in touch with you early on, if we felt that there were enough structures threatened that warranted this to move forward. So just know that, behind the scenes, we're talking a lot, and we'll try to stay out ahead of this as best we can.
Okay. I guess, so, to keep it straight in my head, it's any fire that's in these gaps, and it is not contingent upon the state conflagration. Is that correct, or do I have that wrong?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, we get quite.
Okay, so does it have to, does the state have to declare the emergency first, and then the board does, or, okay, so it's not dependent on that, okay. And then I saw that there was a comment in the chat from Brian Lee, our emergency manager, if you'd like to read that, if he is still on. I cannot see everybody. Or I can just go ahead and read it.
Commissioner, I think Brian may have joined by phone. I received a chat from him a few minutes ago, saying he may have to join by phone.
Okay, let's see. Brian, are you available by phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay, how about, I can, do you want to summarize your comment that you had put in the chat?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say Brent really summarized the, the state assets and availability. A lot's changing with Senate Bill 762, and some of the other lessons learned from the Holiday Farm, I'm sorry, I keep saying Holiday Farm, Labor Day, 2020 fires. So that's all. So that's a lot of this other push to mobilize local incident management teams, EOCs, and well, get these delegations of authority at least staged or making sure commissioners and fire defense board chiefs know what resources are available. And keeping in mind, as you write that delegation of authority, it's a template and there are some things you could add additional restrictions on or additional details on that, you know, obviously there could be pros and cons depending on what restrictions you're putting in place. So just because you're delegating authority doesn't necessarily mean you're delegating every piece of authority you have. You can pick and choose what pieces you're choosing to delegate down. But the availability of those air assets and some of the initial assets that can be available to help our locals is so, so key and a big part of this. And then the other scenario that this might be used outside of just those unprotected areas is say our local incident management team or fire district is very overwhelmed very quickly. This will also further support the state coming in to help our local fire districts. And it's outside of our, obviously our EOC efforts. So that's really what I wanted to say. Our EOC team is there to support what's going on in the field, whether that's OSFM team or our local fire district team. But we don't, obviously in the EOC, do any sort of firefighting asset management unless we were asked directly. So we would defer to OSFM or our local fire district or Fire Defense Board to do that part.
Thank you, Brian. So last question I have is where, who, where does the funding come, or who pays the cost? Who pays for this?
So the state, it's the state's responsibility for the, for the funding. And with regard to where that comes from, that's a question that's above me. I apologize.
I guess my main question is, are there any financial liability for the county?
There's no financial liability for the county.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? I know we're running a little short on time. This has been a very good, important conversation. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. And let me just double check everyone's video on here. And I apologize, I am switching back and forth between a lot of different things. All right, well, I'm hearing and seeing no additional questions or comments, so I think we can say thank you. We appreciate your time. And if we have follow-up questions, do we reach out to you or who do we contact?
Yes, you can reach out to me.
Perfect, thank you.
Provide my contact information. Sure. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we can move into our business meeting. We will start with old business 4.1, discussion of possible changes to Benton County Code, Chapter 32, emergency procedures, and we have our County Council Vance Cronie with us.
Thank you, Sheriff Wyse. So this is technically, it is a second reading of Chapter 32 for the ordinance that we put forward three weeks ago. And that was to amend our emergency procedures ordinance to include the burn ban. Subsequent to the first reading, we had a meeting with Brian Lee, Sheriff Van Arsdale, Leo, and we had Tom, Tom Moore and Joe Kirby to talk about the burn ban, how it actually would work if it goes into effect. And a number of participants in that conversation expressed some concerns about the several areas of concern. One was that the, well, from the sheriff, it's very hard for the deputies to know where rural fire protection boundaries are, where ODF lands are and where unincorporated areas are if they get calls for people burning. ODF expressed the concern that it has permits that it allows people to have campfires or I think burns, you said, controlled small burns during fire season. And the concern was that our ordinance would preempt those, those rules and it would. And so we would automatically be setting up a conflict between Benton County's ordinance and state rules and practices that ODF has been managing for decades, decades, yeah. And last but not least, the question was how far and wide the burn ban would extend, would extend into ODF land, would extend into rural fire protection covered lands? Or would it be confined to just unincorporated areas of Benton County with no fire protection district and not subject to ODF regulations? So all of those questions were brought up in this meeting and we felt it would probably be prudent to hit, not just pause on this, but to let this revision to Chapter 32 die, go back with a more cooperative, you know, a collaborative creation on a burn ban that addresses some of these concerns and then it puts forward a more certain, more enforceable burn ban that both the sheriff, ODF can clearly articulate to folks in the rural community and to our firefighters out there who would have to respond. So that, at this juncture, is the suggestion that came out of that meeting and happy to answer any questions. Brian, I think you're still on, so Brian Lee can chime in from the sheriff's perspective as well.
So my question is, what is, what's the issue with what we're doing now? If we just let this die, die and don't consider trying to do all this work of making something else? What's, what's the issue with how we're doing things now?
So right now we have no mechanism in our county, county code to dictate that during fire season, there be no fires that could result in forest fire wildfires. If we do nothing, let this amendment die, that status will continue. The impetus for bringing into play this burn ban was to address the concerns that have arisen the last couple of years about the increased possibility of firefighting, of fires in the rural areas and how we can at least put in place a code provision that allows us to ramp up educational opportunities and informational campaigns to let folks know of the dangers that they are increasing by having fires in areas that are more susceptible to wildfires.
So do we need an ordinance to enact an educational campaign though?
No, no.
Okay, thoughts, comments from other commissioners and I'm going to maybe ask for some other opinions.
As I understand it, we are, what we have before us is actually an alternative approach to enacting a burn ban here in Benton County, correct?
The proposal that's- Did Brent just run forward? Or this particular item?
This particular item. There's proposed language in our packet that is different from the previous proposal. Isn't there? I thought there was. I may have just misread.
Commissioners, I think it would be a good idea to ask Chief Miller to provide a little bit more background and context because the Fire Defense Board does take action relative to burn bans in conjunction with ODF. So I'd like, I would suggest that Chief Miller join in the conversation.
Happy to oblige, thank you. One of the things I'd like to say is we work very tightly with ODF and their public use restrictions during the burn, during the wildland season. I emailed it to you guys previously. There's low, moderate, high and extreme that they utilize. And what, both Lynn and Benton County Fire Defense Board Chiefs all follow their recommendations for burning. And we just follow those. We also do a feverish campaign during the summer about burn bans and enacting those through the Fire Defense Board. We do them together again through ODF and Lynn and Benton County Fire Defense Boards. And we enact them at the same time so that people don't, don't get confused. And so that is, I mean, probably 75% of our meetings throughout the year are revolved around burning and burning or not burning, those kinds of things. The other thing that everyone needs to probably be aware of, which kind of goes back to the previous meeting too, now that I think about it is we have certain indicators during the burn season that trigger all county response to all wildland fires. So if we have low humidities, we have low fuel moistures, then that triggers us to basically all the fire departments in Benton County respond to all the wildland fires. And I will, I'd like to add that on Labor Day weekend, 2020, that was instrumental in getting that fire taken care of on Newwood out on Highway 34 where it didn't turn into a conflagration. So like I said, we're very feverish on staying on top of it. And really what I would recommend is if the board of commissioners would come behind us and support us in our mission and then maybe put out some PSAs or, you know, or something to that effect that says, hey, the Fire Defense Board has said no more burning and you want to support that, we would, we would love that.
So Chief Miller, is it fair, or I guess, so my question is, or my thoughts, this is just my thoughts. If it's helpful for our partners and if they're saying, yes, we would like to work together and have your support, please county do this, then I would be happy for us to do this. If our partners are all saying, you know, there's maybe, this isn't going to accomplish much, it's going to be a lot of work. I want to be thoughtful of our staff time and all of your staff time working on this if it's not really going to achieve much. And if we can already kind of accomplish our goals in a different way, that's not going to take up as much time and resources. Does that make sense? Okay.
Well, I would, again, I don't, I don't think this is the right approach.
Because speaking with the attorneys the other day, it sounded like, you know, it would over, be overarching of the ODF stuff. And they do have reasons to have their burning levels, their public use restrictions, they have reasons for that. And then as, also as you drive around the county, you see the ODF signs out there and they have the different colors and indicators, the little arrow or whatever. And so that's going to be super confusing to the public because even if you said, okay, you could do it in ODF lands, well, they don't know whether they're ODF lands or not. So they're going to go ahead and do it and then now, now we have a problem. So again, I don't, I, I think I understand the spirit of what you're trying to do. But I really also believe it's in the best interest of the county if you guys, like I said, instead of coming out with something like this, maybe something I could be in support of what we already do as, you know, professionals in the field.
Thank you. So just clarify, are you in more support of us doing more work and coming back with another ordinance? Or would you be more supportive of us just not doing an ordinance and finding other ways to help support you? Oh, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. I'd say the, the second one would be probably better. Instead of creating an ordinance, maybe just maybe a robust campaign to support our mission.
Perfect, thank you. So I see Commissioner Malone has his hand up. I will ask him and then I might ask for some more opinions if there are any from our other guests. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, my interest in this issue is educational. I, from my work as a volunteer firefighter and have some background. I love the ODF, nice color-coded fire danger signs. My interest is getting, helping get, getting the word out. And so that's definitely not interested in competing with ODF. I recognize they have the expertise and want to get Benton County resources to help get the word out, especially rural folks that may have some exposure to wildland fires. So I think we're all on the same, same page here. But just wanting to, especially as fire season, fire seasons seem to be getting longer and getting to places that they didn't used to get to. Think of the Chip Ross Fire, 2014, September. I think that that got people's attention that wildland fires aren't something just out there. They are, they can be literally close to home. So I, I just want, I guess to summarize, I want to back up what the information ODF is developing and getting people aware of, especially once fire season's declared, getting more people aware of what the dangers are, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. Joe?
In response to Commissioner Malone's concern regarding education and awareness and county supporting the efforts of ODF and the Fire Defense Board to get the message out, we do work in conjunction with them. I did ask John Avey Stokes, who's our interim PIO, to join us this morning. And I know she was on the meeting up until just a couple of minutes ago so she could listen in to the dialogue. But that is an important partnership and we're happy to help continue to advance that education and outreach and awareness. So right now, John Avey is our person that would focus on doing that. Our new PIO will be joining us on June 29th.
Thank you. Let's see, Michael, did you have any thoughts at all that you wanted to share?
No, I thought Chief Miller, I think, did a good job explaining it. You know, we have the same concerns from the ODF perspective and I actually just wrote down John Avey's name to make sure we get in touch prior to fire season so we can start working on getting the word out. Because yeah, it's, it's important when it comes to fire restrictions, how the messaging goes out. Because we can very quickly confuse the public as far as who has jurisdiction and where and what the restrictions are and when. So like Chief said, we're always, we're constantly talking during fire season, outside of fire season, to make sure we're getting the timing right. So I think the more on page we all, more on the same page we all can be, the better off. And I think we'll get there with the support of the county on just getting better messaging out to the public instead of having another dueling burn ban that's out there. Because I, I think it's also important to note really that, you know, once, you know, when we, when we declare fire season, we work very closely with our landowner association, we work very closely with the Fire Defense Board and all the fire chiefs on when the proper timing of that should happen. And once we decide to go into fire season, that's essentially when the fire districts will go into their individual burn bans for their district. And then once we go into fire season, that's when essentially no burning is allowed in ODF protected ground. So for the most part, you know, there's a, there's a county burn ban going on regardless behind the scenes that folks need to be aware of once ODF declares fire season. So and I, and I think it's been working well in the past, but I think having some increased messaging is always a good thing and we're well on support of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Malone?
Definitely agree, consistent messaging is critical. Sometime, a year ago, I think the county got six portable reader boards. And I can, depending on what other messages we're trying to get out, I can, I can see those being used for those being used for letting people know fire season's in effect or another way to get the, especially when it gets into high and extreme fire danger, just something like that, that different places than, than low, medium, high signs to reinforce the message. But just an example of some possibility of what the county could, could do to help get the message out.
Thank you. And then I want to ask if any of our guests in the audience have an opinion they would like to share? And if so, you can come forward to the laptop. All right, so I heard it, it's based, one individual supports what's already been said already, that's great. All right. So yeah, I, you know, I'm happy to leave this to the experts and have them work with our staff as needed. I would just like, I want everyone to know that the county, I want the county to be supportive in whatever way we can. I don't want to step on anyone's toes or make it harder than it needs to be. Just how can we support you? That's the message I would like to get across. So procedurally, do we just let this die? Do we need a motion to, I see County Council is waving his finger at me. Vance, please go ahead.
So just at this juncture, I guess I'm going to circle back to something that Commissioner Ojero asked, and are you being asked to do something different? Technically, what is before you is the second reading of the ordinance that amends chapter thirty-two. Sounds like you're heading in a direction, you are choosing not to enact that ordinance, which means we would not hold a second reading, we would simply let this go away. We would make a note, Erica, that this ordinance did not have a second read and it did not become effective. So for all intents and purposes, it, it will have died. You don't need to do anything further.
And would anybody, would, Joe, would you like a motion that we do not want to proceed with any, or go ahead? Did you want to say something?
Commissioner, I've been communicating with Brian Lee and Brian has been attempting to make some comments and apparently we're unable to hear him. He is joining us by phone at this point. I'm not sure what caller number he is.
Sixteen.
Can you guys hear me right now?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I, go ahead.
Okay, no problem. I, I just wanted to support everything that was said by Chief Miller, as well as ODF and OSFM. I, as we move forward, as you guys heard on the last item, the nuances of districts and areas is pretty nuanced. So when they declare the burn bans and official kickoff of fire season, I could come forward with a proclamation or a resolution to help push our public campaign and public messaging. And I will definitely work with John Avey and our side, Jamie Glass, as well as the new PIO with whatever wildfire campaign and education programs we need. Happy to do virtual community presentations on it, whatever we need to keep spreading the message and making it very strong, but not confuse people.
Perfect, thank you, Brian. We are lucky to have you and we're allowed to leave. All right. Joe, sorry, so my question is, would you like a motion about us undirecting this or not directing any future work on this topic? Or are we good?
Actually, I don't think we necessarily need a motion. I just think we would advise County Council to mention.
That sounds good. All right. And we might be having some more technical difficulties. Oh, maybe it's just, yep, we're frozen. Okay. Well, I, oh, maybe it's my, my computer? I'm frozen. Okay. It's just me. Got it. Well, shoot.
Can we have two Commissioner Malones?
There I go. Maybe I will jump off and jump back on again. Maybe we'll take a five-minute break? Do you want to, just kind of unmute and say we're going to take a five-minute break?
Hi, everyone, we'll be taking a five-minute break.
And it looks like we are all back and continue, keep continuing the meeting. So next up, new business discussion and decision regarding a request for funding support from the NAACP, Lynn Benton Branches Juneteenth Celebration and Black-Owned Business Expo. As we have Johan with us. Welcome, Johan.
Hello. We also have Wendy Sutton, our speaker for it, for the NAACP. So we have a really great request from the NAACP for funding related to their annual Juneteenth celebration. This is a reminder that we have made Juneteenth a county holiday as of March 1st, and we will be celebrating that in the next coming weeks. Their event is on the 18th. I'll let Wendy describe more of the details of that. Wendy, are you available?
I am. Hi. So we're having it at LBCC of Albany this year. It's the first time we've been in Albany, which is just nice since we are Lynn and Benton counties. We will be having a few firsts this year. We're going to be having this Black-Owned Business Expo, which is really exciting. We're trying to reach everyone, Black-owned business owners in the two counties and also throughout the Leamont Valley, because there's just not that many, and we really want to emphasize how important it is to support these folks. And we're also having a book giveaway for all ages, but mostly for the kids, of books that are authored by Black people and illustrated by Black people. Again, just trying to kind of put that focus, making it Black-centered. It's a Black-centered event, obviously, but just making that all the more important. So everything, everything comes with a price tag, as you know. We've got a pretty robust budget this year, actually. We're really pushing hard to get some things going, and we could just really use the county's support. So if you have any questions, I'd really be happy to answer.
Sure, thank you. I have a question. Have you received support from other agencies, like maybe the City of Corvallis, et cetera?
Corvallis has always been awesome. As you probably know, the King Legacy Board this year is still on hiatus, at least it was when we were asking for funds. So they weren't able to support us, but the city itself supported us with $3,000. So yes. So we've also got donations from, cash donations from the Albany Library, the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation, SURGE, and Langley Home Sales. And then we're getting the books are being purchased. At this point, we have two people that are finding for us, the Corvallis Library and Gap School District.
Great. That sounds like it has a lot of community support, which is great to hear. And are there any other comments, questions, or a motion from my fellow commissioners?
I don't seem to be able to unmute.
I appreciate the impressive list of partners that you've developed for this, and I would be glad to make the motion to allocate $500 for the Black Business Expo at the Juneteenth event this year.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Any comments or questions before we move on? Or? All right. Well, thank you very much, Wendy, for joining us, and thank you, Johan. Have a wonderful day. And that will bring us to the information sharing portion of our meeting. First up, Chair Wise, that's me. I'll just quickly say I went to the National Association of Counties Western Interstate Region Conference in Alaska last week. It was great. I learned a lot of stuff. Some of the themes that they had were connecting counties and military installations, which that didn't really apply to us too much, and we're lucky to have OSU. Building resilience in small counties, federal agency partners, US Department of Interior and US Forest Service, et cetera. So if anyone has any other questions or would like to chat with me about that, just reach out to me offline, and I'm happy to do so. Next up, Vice Chair, Commissioner Malone. Would you like to share anything?
Yeah. Last week, while you were gone, we had a, at our Tuesday board meeting, had a presentation, a second presentation from our sustainability folks, Ashawn McGuire and Jen Brown. And as part of that, they brought in, in his name, from a good company out of Eugene, who has been a consultant on our energy usage and figuring out how to, how to do better, especially with new buildings and lining out where the, where our big uses are, which is fleet, electricity usage, and one other, commuting. And just what we're currently doing and where we should be heading. There were a couple takeaways from that that got me excited, and one from the consultant talking about DEQ has money to pay for electric vehicle charging stations, and that this wasn't something in the future. This was available currently. And looking forward to seeing how our plans and that opportunity may line up. The other fun factoid that I learned is you always hear about solar panels lifespan, you know, 20 years, maybe 25 years. And the reason for that is generally they're connected to a, literally connected to the roof, and roofs last 20 to 25 years. And that's really where that number comes from. Solar panels degrade about 1% a year. So after 50 years, they're still at 50% efficiency. So I thought that was a worthwhile piece of information, and I'd be curious how that, what kind of roofs that Ben County's solar panels are on. But I think that's the high point from my recent activity.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Ojero?
Thank you. I just wanted to let you all know that I had an enjoyable visit last week over at the Broad Street Commons with the project manager that Corvallis Housing first has hired to start working on their permanent sort of housing development that will occur on that huge common site. And they're just in the very early stages of figuring out what that might look like and getting community feedback and input and making Mike Andrews available for discussions with other community members. So fortunately, there were a couple of other people from the county there, both Suzanne from the Health Department and Rebecca from our team working on housing and homelessness. And so, and city folks, as well as other nonprofits. So it was a robust conversation. And it's just exciting to see that next stage of development that's occurring there. I have his contact information if anyone wants to reach out to him. He's more than willing to talk to any of us about what we want to see and what our interests are looking forward. We kicked off the HERSA site visit this morning, and so that process is ongoing, and you all will be included in that final wrap-up phase as they report to us. And lastly, I wanted to mention that thanks to Joe, we had a meeting with Ryan Vogt from the Cascades West Council of Governments about our Veteran Services Office. As you'll recall, I brought that issue up a while back about ensuring that there's better connectivity between our veteran service programming and some of the other veteran service programming at Samaritan and at Community Services Consortium, and having our folks feel more proactive and not just going after the financial benefits side of things. I think that that was a good conversation, and I think that there will be forward movement as a result of that. We have some homework to do on our side as well, just in terms of providing a clear point person for them to work with over here on staff. And I did follow up a little bit more with Samaritan about what they are thinking about their, the Veteran Service Discussion. And part of it is that they have a Veteran Service Office of one, and their person is very busy just helping vets get their medical bills paid. But they want to be able to do more, too. And so they're trying to figure out how best to serve that function, or whether we, I think, could serve that function for them. And so there's a, just a real need for all of these veteran service providers to get together, sit down, talk it out, and figure out what we can do so that we provide better and more seamless services to our veteran community in the county. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, just a few items. A reminder, we have a meeting with our quarterly meeting with the city managers this afternoon. I believe that meeting starts at 1:00. In addition, Commissioner Wise and I have a leadership meeting with the City of Corvallis later this week. I want the board chair and myself meet with the mayor and Corvallis city manager, as well as a couple of other members of the council. And so we've started to resurrect those meetings, which is good. We used to be very disciplined about making sure that those were happening, and then once COVID impacted us, we kind of fell off, and now we're restarting those. So just wanted to mention that to you. I also think in relationship to the meetings that we're now beginning to hold in person, we need a little bit more direction from the board as to what your expectations are surrounding that. Today, what we've started to do is to try and make sure that we can offer the board meetings on the first, your first and third Tuesday board meetings, which are your work session and business agendas, and we are doing those both via Facebook Live and virtually via go-to meeting and in person. As you can tell, we experienced a few glitches this morning, unfortunately, but we'll continue to iron those out. But as the board looks at all of your other meetings, whether or not that be goal-setting or your meetings with departments and/or your other meetings that you have collectively as a group, now which, which of those meetings do you expect to be Facebook Live? Which ones do you expect to be in person? Are we going to be making all of the board meetings back in person now, no matter who it might be with, if you will? So need a little bit more direction as to what the board's desire is here moving forward.
Thank you, Joe. I think my preference is to have at least our, you know, board meetings, like our Tuesday board meetings in person, if we can. And then I'm flexible for the other ones. I'm, you know, if we still want to do virtual, that's what's easier for everyone. But I would like to know what the other commissioners think.
I too. Would like to see our full board meetings live and in person where possible, and definitely on Facebook Live. The departmental meetings, I think it's been very functional to have them virtual, because it means that none of our department heads need to travel, and we reduce the emissions, all those greenhouse gas emissions that we've been, that we're starting scrupulously watch. So I, but that said, there's always a place for those in-time, in-person meetings, and if there's an occasional in-person meeting, I think that's probably a good thing, too. The leadership team meeting is one that perhaps could be in person. I don't know. No, and that way we can see all of the department heads at least that once a month in person, if not in the smaller meetings.
Yeah, I agree. I think the board meetings should be in person after that. Case by case, which ones make sense to be in person, and it may not be that it has to be every time, but there's some advantages to meeting in person and having that interaction, especially before and after the official meeting. But travel time and going back to what I was talking about earlier on greenhouse gas concerns, and I think what I didn't mention about how exciting it is to go from our 2040 goals, which are aspirational, and then bring them down to our operational level, and this doing virtual meetings, I think is, fits in with our greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, and so should be a part of our repertoire going forward. But definitely start with our regular business meetings and then figure out what we might want to add to that. And after making sure that our technology is working like we want it to.
That's what I was going to add, too, is our technology capabilities, because this is a lot to juggle and manage. I know once we get all of our equipment finally, whenever that is, it'll be a lot easier. But until then, it's a challenge.
Commissioner Wise, you're correct. Once we have our new audio/video package installed, which won't be until at the earliest mid-August, up until that time, we'll continue to have a hodgepodge of technology, if you will, that we're trying to work with. And, but we will hopefully by August have all of that perfected, just in time for our new package. Commissioners, thank you for that feedback. I think it's, what I'll be doing is working with staff to ensure that both your calendar invites, as well as actually on the agenda, that it's very clear what type of meeting it will be. And I think what we're going to do is create a matrix that we can all refer back to that identifies the meeting and then what type of coverage or how we're going to manage that also, keeping in mind that not all of those meetings do we Facebooks. We don't stream via Facebook under many circumstances. I think right now, John, I'm looking to you, we Facebook Live stream the first and third Tuesdays of the month, and then also the fourth Tuesday, which is this meeting, also known as information sharing. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I guess I haven't.
Same format we've been doing as far as Facebook Live. If not a session.
Okay, so that was a head nod and a thumbs up to signal yes.
Okay, thank you. I think I have enough direction at this point to work with staff moving forward.
Oh, the only thing I would add to that is just making sure that we're clear to our invitees, if it's in person or not, especially those who don't come very often.
You bet. And I'm assuming that even though we're having it in person, that, for example, those folks that would prefer to join us virtually, the board is still okay with that?
Yes, of course. Whatever, you know, there's different comfort levels out there and different needs, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for you this morning, Commissioners.
All right. And I did remember one other thing that Joe and I had talked about, which had to do with community comments and public input at meetings, and just a question of, aside from public hearings, like we take testimony during public hearings, but aside from that, you know, when is the best time to take public input? And so I shared with Joe that my preference is to, at the beginning of the meetings, when we have public input, just have all the testimony there that's not pertaining to a public hearing, and then have it at the chair's, you know, discretion later on if someone wants to testify to an item. Just because as I'm trying to run the meetings, it's really important to try to remember to ask the testimony at each item. So that's just how I would like to move forward, and unless anyone has any, you know, concerns about that, I think that's what I will do.
I think that sounds good. It is the chair's prerogative. And, you know, when I was chairing, there were times when we would invite folks to wait until that agenda item, just because there were several people that wanted to speak to it, and it wasn't a public hearing, and it made it more coherent and cohesive for the greater viewership to hear it all at once. But, yeah, so I think that context matters, ease of meeting management matters. So, judgment?
Well, having flexibility to design the meeting depending on who shows up and what the topic is.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Any, anything else for the good of the order? Any other? Hearing none, we will adjourn at 11:40 a.m. Thank you, everyone, and have a good day.